It is 6:30 and I'm calling to order the deliberative session for the Exeter Region Cooperative School District. I'm Kate Miller, the moderator, and our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you to everybody who's here in attendance. All the voters should have picked up a card from the supervisors of the checklist for your town. Bill Gothier, who is the chair of the Cooperative School Board, has a few words to begin. Mr. Gothier.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight and listening to our school board and our budget. We appreciate all of the input and support that you guys have given us. So I do want to start by, there's been a lot of people that have given us input about the budget, so I want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee for all their work. They have spent countless hours going through the budget, line item by line item, with the building administrators, and scrutinizing to ensure that we are putting a budget forth that looks strong and that values education and the taxpayers. So their work, we really appreciate all their work. I also want to recognize a couple people on my team, on the board, who have done exceptional work. One, from Brentwood, Scott. Fortunately, Scott cannot be here tonight for family reasons, but Scott has served on the board and served us very well. He's an advocate for the kids. He has kids in the school system. He's done a great job. We have developed a plaque for him. We'll be sending that to him, so if he's watching, you'll be getting that plaque. The other school board member is Mr. Hall. Bob, you have been on this board and have given so much to the board, and I joined this board and you're on it. And a couple things that I remember about Bob is that he does, every year, there's a couple things that he is very passionate about. First is the Real Rights Scholarship, that we give out each year to outstanding students, and you have been an advocate. We appreciate that. SST in Great Bay, we are here to talk about all the work that we do in SST and the Great Bay. You have been an advocate for them, for both those schools. You show up to their meetings, and we really appreciate the work you do on that, because it brings us and gets our knowledge up to speed and how we can serve them best. And then the other thing is, I remember sitting in a meeting, this was a couple times, that you were so passionate about making sure that every kid has an opportunity all the time, and you were passionate about making sure that kids had food to eat, and you always stood up and made sure that their voice was heard. So we appreciate all the work that you've done, Bob, and I've got a little plaque here to share with you and a little thank you card from all of us. So Bob, thank you very much for your work.
It's easy to say, when you're a Blue Hawk, you're always a Blue Hawk. And I've been at Blue Hawk for many, many years, but public education is a real asset. It's the backbone of our nation. There's people out there now that don't believe that and want to change that. My goal is to keep this going as long as I can, and with your help, thank you for coming tonight. It's going on. We're in good hands up here. That great staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I also want to just kind of say that we are, unfortunately, that we have some retirees here tonight in this place, and I am sad to say that Dr. Azabel will be leaving us at the end of this year. So I just want to recognize all the work that you do, and knowing that you are retiring, you put in 110%. It is amazing. I go, I meet with her in her office, and she is ready to go all the time. She's there early. I get emails late. I get texts at night, which I don't love, late at night, but you're always on it. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. You are going to be missed by all of us on the board. So thank you for your work. Principal Monahan, we are going to miss you. Thank you for all your work. You are steadfast in everything that you do. You're thoughtful, and you're here for the students, and we appreciate everything you do. So you will be missed by the board, certainly. And one other person that I know is here in the building, because I thought I saw Rusty. Are you here, Rusty?
He's up top.
He's up top.
Up top.
Rusty, yeah, see? That's what I'm talking about. He's always here, but someone that does not get a lot of recognition but does so much work for the school. It is amazing. The facility that you sit in, when you walk into this high school, the middle school, all our schools, Rusty, you do amazing work. Can you please stay? Thank you for everything. Last, and then I'll turn the mic back over to Kate, so I appreciate you letting me have a little bit of time. The school board members, my teammates, my friends, thank you so much for all your work this year. You're going to see presentations tonight. You're going to hear about some of the things that we're putting on the ballot. You're going to ask questions, and we have answers. It's because of their hard work, dedication, not just coming to every meeting and checking a box, but coming to every meeting and working hard, asking the right questions, and putting their heart into it. And they do volunteer, and they're here for the kids and for the administrators, and I am so glad to be on your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Bill. All right. One thing I wanted to just point out, many people have been to this deliberative session before, but just so that folks understand what we're doing here, tonight is a meeting of the voters of the six towns that make up the Cooperative School District. So this is a time for us to debate and discuss the items that are on the warrant that will be up for the election in March. The folks who live in the town may speak at this meeting. There's a microphone down front for folks to line up if they wish to speak on an article. Only voters are allowed to speak at this meeting. We do have some administrators and other folks who may be very helpful for answering questions and explaining things who don't live within the district. So I'll be asking a little bit later for permission to have all of those folks able to speak if they have input to provide to us. This is an SB2, Official Ballot School District, meaning that we have our district meetings split into two parts. Tonight is the deliberative session, where we meet and discuss and amend, as permitted by law, the items that are on the warrant. And there are copies of the warrant, lots of them, at the back with explanations, copies of the budget and the default budget at the back, on the tables with the supervisors of the checklist. I use moderator rules to facilitate this meeting. Those have been available on the SAU website, along with the warrant and the budget. There are a few copies up there, if anyone is curious. They haven't changed in the last year. Summarizing some of the rules, we have four articles on the ballot. I will recognize a member of the school board to present each of the articles. The initial speakers may be school board members. They may be members of the Budget Advisory Committee or some of our administrators. I'm requesting that initial presentations be limited to about 10 minutes, if possible. It's a school night. And after the initial presentations, I'll open up the floor for questions or comments from other people. I request that speakers who come to speak at the microphone limit their comments to three minutes. If you're on the stage and you wish to speak to a particular article, please raise your hand so that I can see you, because it's a little difficult for me to see everybody. So let me know if you wish to speak, and you can speak from the microphone at your place. If you're a member of the audience, please line up, sort of coming down that way to the microphone, and state your name and the town in which you live, and please hold up your voter card when you come to the mic so that I know that you have checked yourself in. It's important that people who want to speak to any of the articles speak only at the mic. This deliberative session is being recorded, and it will be cable cast out to all of our towns in the six communities, for them to be able to watch on the local access TV channel, probably more than once, so that we want to make sure we capture everyone's comments, which is only possible if they're speaking at the mic. Typically, I will recognize speakers who haven't spoken yet before I have folks who've already spoken on a particular article speak again, just to give everyone a chance. If someone has an amendment that they'd like to propose to a warrant article, that needs to be in writing, and it needs to come up here to the clerk and to me so that we can make sure we have the wording exactly right. For someone to make a motion to amend an article, we will need someone to propose it, and also a second before we can take it up. And we will ask for the names of the person proposing the amendment, and also for the name of the person who is seconding that. Once we have that, we will open up for discussion. The person who makes the amendment can do a brief presentation, three minutes or less, if possible. And, let's see, if we have a motion to call the question, which means that would cut off debate on a particular article or an amendment to an article, that, like any other motion, requires a motion plus a second. If it's been seconded, then we will vote on the cutting off further debate. I will not entertain a motion to call the question if there are people lined up who haven't spoken yet, because I want to make sure that everybody who wants to has had a chance to speak on something. A motion to call the question requires a two-thirds majority, and once that passes, there'll be no more debate, and we'll just vote on that amendment. So I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. I'm not sure I'm going to have everybody's name correct. We have our clerk here, Susan Bendraff. You met Mr. Hall. Melissa Lyons, who's one of our school board members. Down the, is that correct? Yes. And Mr. Gothier, Don Bolins. Erin Garcia-Paris, there we go. And then we have Amy Ransom. And beyond that, we have our, I believe, is that our special ed director? Yes. Could you, Renee Bennett?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. She's our Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. And we have our superintendent, Esther Asbell, our attorney, Barbara Loman, and we have an Assistant Director for the Finance and Budget, is that right? And Michelle Larson. And we have Molly O'Keefe, who's our Director of Finance and Operations. So some of these folks, including Superintendent Asbell, Director of Finance, O'Keefe, Attorney Barbara Loman, Assistant Superintendent Bennett, are not in the district, all in favor of allowing them to speak if this is helpful. Kindly, sorry?
O'Keefe is in the district.
Oh, I'm sorry, Molly.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Scratch Molly from that list. All folks who are in favor of that, please raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay. I don't see a card, but I heard a tall, one voice. Okay, good. The ayes have it, so those folks will be able to speak. Thank you. All right. After we are done this evening with discussing and possibly amending the article, the voting day is Tuesday, March 11th, and you'll be voting in your individual towns at your typical polling places. I encourage everybody to turn out to vote. For the first article, they're printed in the handout, and I'm going to read them as we go along. They're not going to be printed on the slides overhead. The first one is the operating budget. Shall the district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein totaling $71,266,195. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $70,768,618, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the district or by law, or the governing body may hold one meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13 Roman 10 and Roman 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The Exeter Region Cooperative School Board and Budget Advisory Committee recommend $71,266,195. As set forth on said budget, a majority vote is required. Mr. Gothier, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So I would like to talk to the operating budget for a moment. One of the jobs of the school board is to put forth a budget that is, gives us the opportunity, make sure that every kid has an opportunity to learn at their best, meaning the facilities, the teachers, the people, the administrators, while also being able to be friends and talk to our families and walk around our neighborhoods and be respectful of taxpayers. And we come to that conclusion through a long process, and that process starts in the spring, of looking back at the past year's budget and saying, where can we be better? What can we do that would be best for everyone? And we scrutinize the budget. And then we move into the fall, where the planning really starts, really starts in the summer, with the building administrators getting together with their staff and saying, what are our goals for this year? How are we going to accomplish those goals? How does that fit into the budget? And they put their budgets together, and they bring those budgets, and certainly give them to Molly, so Molly has to take those and put them into the computer system, which is tedious and complicated, but we work through that. And then we asked the Budget Advisory Committee to meet, they meet every Thursday night with the building administrators, where the building administrators go over their budget, and they go through line by line, asking questions, ensuring that everything is understood, it's reasonable, and is accounted for. And that's done over about six meetings. Sometimes it's a seventh meeting. And once that's done, they report back to us, the board. We review the budget. We ask them questions. And once we feel comfortable with the budget, we approve it and we bring it to the public. So a couple weeks ago, we brought it to the public and asked people to come forth, ask questions. And this is where we come tonight, with a budget that's thoughtful, that supports our kids, that also is respectful to the taxpayers. So I would think that this is going to be a really good budget, that's going to do well. And what I want to say is that Molly has put together this video that represents the budget, so you get an inside look to everything and how it affects our students and our staff. So I'm going to turn it over to Molly to play the video.
Sure. And before I start the video, in the back, there are packets, and so there are some of the slides that you'll see in the video, if you'd like to follow along, as well as in the packet is the line-by-line budget, and what's called the MS26, which is the Department of Revenue's summary of the budget, as well as details on the default behind that. So in your packet, you can follow along as we go through the video.
Hi. Welcome to this year's budget season. As you know, the Exeter Region Cooperative School District is comprised of all six towns and covers the schools of the Cooperative Middle School, Exeter High School, SICO School of Technology, and our Adult Ed Program. In this video, you'll see the major drivers and changes in our upcoming budget for this season, and hopefully we can answer questions that you may have around increases and decreases as we work through this process. We always try to create a budget that is fiscally responsible and meets the needs of all of our students.
My name is Kim Schut, and between my husband and me, we have five children who've gone through the SAU 16 school system. We have required special education services for two of our kiddos and cannot say enough about the assistance that's provided from OT, speech, executive functioning skills, and the services for emotional needs. They have been wonderfully supportive, particularly in the co-op and in the high school. My oldest child that's required services is a junior this year and has expectations of going to a four-year school. Not sure that would have been possible without these services. So we highly recommend that the budget supports this for other kiddos that have these types of requirements.
Another amazing opportunity CMS provides is student council. It gives a good leadership opportunity to students, and we coordinate spirit weeks that brings our school community together.
Hello, my name is Hannah Cass, and I'm part of the Student DIJ Committee at Exeter High School. I'm just here to talk about the recent event we did at Riverwoods. So we got to go to Riverwoods, and we discussed dialogue and discussion and debate, and how to have really engage in dialogue with people, especially in a time like now. I think our group really enjoyed having that multi-generational conversation, and I think the group there as well had a really great time, just talking with us and sharing experiences and what we think needs to be done in the world.
One opportunity that CMS offers is being able to audition for a musical and a play. Not a lot of other middle schools do this, so it's an amazing opportunity for students.
Hello, my name is Marley Beltry. I'm a senior at Exeter High School and in year two of animal and plant sciences at the SICO School of Technology. SST has benefited me by challenging me with new opportunities, creating a strong community, and making me excited to learn every day.
The Exeter Region Cooperative School District budget contains three sections: Fed Funds, which are the adult education grants, Food Service, which is our meal service program, and the Operating Budget, which covers the expenses of the four schools Dr. Asbell previously noted. The Fed Funds and Food Service are self-sustaining programs. The part of the budget that impacts taxes is the Operating Budget. Each year, we strive to build a fiscally responsible budget. To show this, we will take a look at how we finished last year. The remaining unspent appropriation for the 23-24 school year was only $976,765 in the General Fund, which is 1.44% of the General Funds budget. We used the same fiscally responsible approach when building the FY26 budget for the 25-26 school year. The FY26 proposed cooperative budget is a needs-based budget that was created by building level and central office administration. It was reviewed in sections with the Budget Advisory Committee, and the BAC voted unanimously to recommend the proposed budget as presented. We also reviewed the budget in a budget workshop with the school board on December 3rd. Most of the cooperative budget is contractual or mandatory obligations, including salary and the associated FICA, New Hampshire retirement, professional development, and health benefits as outlined in the collective bargaining agreements, required special education services, student transportation, the SAU assessment, which includes payroll for all staff, accounts payable for all expenses of the schools, human resources for all staff, and the superintendent of schools, facilities and maintenance costs to support the operations of the schools, the middle school bond, Great Bay Charter school support, and everything else is 5% of the budget. My colleagues will walk through the major changes from the prior fiscal year.
In the Exeter Region Cooperative School District, we have three employee associations: the Exeter Education Association, which serves certified staff such as teachers, school counselors, and others requiring licensure; the Exeter Region Cooperative Paraprofessional Association, which serves paraprofessionals; and the Exeter Area Administrators Association. All paraprofessionals and administrators' salaries are being increased per their collective bargaining agreement. This was a negotiating year for the Exeter Education Association, so that increase will be reflected in a separate warrant article. All non-affiliated staff were placed into the budget at a 3% increase. We also took a look at staffing levels and made adjustments as necessary based on enrollment and where contracted services are used. Annually, we receive the health and dental increases from our insurance providers. This year, the increase in health insurance rates varied per plan, and the plans offered changed due to the elimination of the point-of-service or POS plans from health trust. The district's HMO plan includes a 5.2% increase. The new PPO plan is more cost-effective than the current POS plan that is being eliminated. The district's dental plan includes a 5% increase. The district's dental plan includes a 5% increase. Regarding FICA and NHRS retirement, both are a function of salary. Therefore, when our salary budget goes up or down, so does FICA and retirement. Additionally, the required NHRS employer contribution rates have decreased. For those that fall under the teacher category, rates are going from 19.64% to 19.23%. For other employees, the rates went down from 13.53% to 12.75%.
The needs of students in SAU-16 have evolved significantly. Since 2016, the percentage of students with IEPs in the middle and high schools has increased from 12% to over 20%, and this trend is projected to continue into the 2025-2026 school year. The CDC reports that 40% of adolescents experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness in 2023, and 20% seriously considered suicide. Additionally, 1 in 6 children aged 2 to 8 have a behavioral, mental, or developmental disorder. As the complexity of student needs grows, there has been a corresponding rise in the demand for contracted services, out-of-district placements, and specialized transportation, further straining school budgets. To comply with IEP requirements, the school district has had to contract several services, including paraprofessional support due to staffing shortages. These services may include a variety of supports necessary for students to make meaningful progress. In response to the shortage of paraprofessionals and to provide comprehensive support across all tiers, the district has reallocated resources to hire additional interventionists at the middle and high school levels. This adjustment has helped lower the cost of contracted services for the 2025-2026 school year. The district is responsible for ensuring that students receive the special education services outlined in their IEPs, even when they attend charter schools. Charter schools typically contract their own specialists, and the district often collaborates with these schools to use their resources, minimizing the need for costly transportation to district schools. While the district strives to provide the necessary supports within its schools, some students continue to struggle despite extensive interventions. Out-of-district placements are considered only after significant time, resources, and interventions have been exhausted. The number of out-of-district placements has risen due to the increasing complexity of student needs. Additionally, inflation has driven up the cost of tuition for these placements. Under IDEA, school districts must ensure that students with disabilities have access to a free and appropriate public education, which sometimes necessitates placing students in specialized out-of-district programs when they cannot make meaningful progress in the general education environment.
We are seeing rising costs for supplies and equipment due to inflation. Electric and natural gas rates are locked in until November 2026, and projections are based on prior-year actuals. Part of the salary decrease in the lines above is resulting in a higher contracted service for custodial staff. We continue to try to hire custodial staff when possible.
The increase in professional development is based on contractual obligations to enhance the learning of our staff. A renegotiation of the first student contract and a change in homeless student need has increased transportation. The co-op board has a memorandum of agreement with Great Bay Charter School to support students, and we are seeing a change in the number of students that attend. We have a fixed bond schedule for the middle school, and each year, the payment is a little bit less. All other changes are $34,451, or 1.26% of the budget change. When the voters go to the ballot boxes, they will have a choice between the proposed budget we have just presented and the default budget. The default is the prior-year budget plus or minus any contractual or mandatory obligations required by law, or one-time expenditures in the prior-year budget. The Exeter Region Cooperative Budget is divided up on enrollment. The tax rate for each town in SAU-16 has two lines: one for the local elementary school, and the other for the town's portion of the cooperative budget. This chart shows the breakdown of the cooperative budget and the tax impact per town.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carly Shurf, and I am your student representative on the cooperative board. Today, I will focus on how the SAU-16 has impacted me. At Exeter High School, the blend of academic and social programming has played a huge role in shaping who I am today. In the classroom, I've been challenged with difficult coursework and supportive teachers who pushed me to reach my goals. Whether I'm in an AP class or a unique elective, the opportunities here have allowed me to explore my interests while preparing for the next steps in life. Beyond the academics, the social aspect is just as important. Being involved in sports, clubs, and leadership roles has taught me to take responsibility and build strong connections with my peers. Programs like Student Senate helped me strengthen my skills in communication and understanding new perspectives while working with my friends. Together, these experiences have given me the tools and confidence I need to be successful. Inside and outside the classroom, on the court or on the field, I'll always be grateful for the community that has supported me since kindergarten.
And that concludes the video.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, this will appear on the ballot without changes. Is there...
Is it possible to amend? Is the questions...
Of course.
Now? Okay.
Yeah. Actually, could you come down? I'm sorry, we meant to use just one mic tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ted Lloyd. I'm from East Kingston.
And you've got your voter card?
There you go.
Yay. Thank you.
I just want to make a couple of quick comments about the budget. It's a little misleading showing us the 3.99% because there is a, another warrant article that's going to increase teachers' salaries. And both of those are recommended by the board. And if you add those together, it's actually a 5.3% increase. I would point out to the board and to the audience, the voters, that my little town of East Kingston, the town itself, was able to come up with a budget increase of 0.38%. The East Kingston School District, the local elementary school, was able to come up with a budget that increased only by 0.9%. 5.3% is excessive, and taxpayers around the Kingston, excuse me, the Exeter area cannot afford that. So I would like to ask Liz to present her...
So I get to recognize the next speaker. Thank you. Are you done, Mr. Lloyd?
I'm going to be seconding the amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Liz Faria from Brentwood?
Yep.
And I would like to point out that of all the towns, together, the registered voters in all the towns except for Exeter are 14,784, and Exeter has 13,091 of those. So we can almost never have an impact, especially the four smaller towns. And in the largest of the small towns, and everything together is $14 million. So to get $71 million for just the middle and the high school is kind of absurd. I would like to amend Article 1 of the operating budget to $69 million.
And is there a second?
Ted Lloyd from East Kingston. I second the motion.
So I gather that this would change the text of the warrant article to substitute the $69 million number for the $71,266,195 number? Is that correct? Okay. So the default budget would then be higher, which is $70,768,618. Okay. Okay. So now we are discussing this amendment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this amendment?
Yes. My name is Brian Grissette from Exeter. I wasn't able to find the line item budget on the website, but I see you have it here today, so it's only able to scan it briefly. I do have, in regards to these reductions, I do have some questions. I found four different line items that have a $1 attributed. This is usually done to facilitate for a transfer of funds from other line items, which is permissible by statute based upon category. But that leads me to believe, since there are at least four, I had to go very quickly, that there was an intent, rather than zipping out that line, that there was an intent to transfer monies in. And I would like to, whoever, Budget Committee, whoever has reviewed this, how much money is estimated surplus in the budget you've given that will be allowed to be transferred to just these four or any others?
So we are on the topic of the amendment?
Right. And as justification for reducing the amount, I'd like to have those questions answered before voting on that.
So you're asking for amounts that are considered excess in the budget?
Well, you have four line items. Yes. So where is this money anticipated to come from? That's my first question.
So why don't we do one question at a time?
Okay.
Is there anyone that would like to address that question? Yes, Ms. O'Keefe?
There is no plan to move money around in this budget. Some lines might be at a dollar, for example. COVID. When we needed to get FEMA reimbursement, Michelle and I had to scrub every single line of this budget to get the cooperative as much as we could. If we were to have another global pandemic, we want to charge it to one line. It will save us an extreme amount of time. That's just an example. I do believe all the COVID lines have been zeroed out since we're kind of past COVID. But the past few years, yes, we kept a dollar in the COVID line so we could do such things. We do not plan to move any money around in the budget. This budget was built on a needs basis. Some lines might be at a dollar, just in case we needed to move something from, say, a salary to a contract service, something along those lines. But there is no plan to move it.
Okay.
Okay.
Second question?
Are you aware of what the...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's a lot going on. So you're asking several questions. That one was answered. This gentleman has the mic. What is the point of order? I agree, but I'm letting us play this out a little bit because I try to be a generous moderator, but thank you for that observation. So, Mr. Grissette, your second question?
In regards to, there was a figure that was just given approximately, $976,000 was the, that you see...
It was the unexpendited appropriation from fiscal year '24, meaning in the General Fund, that is the amount of budgeted money that was unspent.
And how much is there in the reserve that is statutorily required that you have?
There is none. There is no statutory required reserve. Every year, we build a needs-based budget, and we budget for what we believe we need. We do not pad the budget or have any extra fluff in the budget.
Okay. And can I, my final question is in regards to staffing and student population. Has that gone up, down? I noticed in one of the explanations from the Budget Committee, it said that their review was based on current staffing levels, which would include those that are presently active. And is that being projected? And are there any projections, reduction in either student count and staffing?
Is there, okay. Ms. Asbell? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Our enrollment has increased from last year to this current year with about 30 students. We don't anticipate that will change drastically either way, up or down the following year. There's always fluctuation between 10 and 30. Our middle school has actually had 50 more students in their grade eight, and so that's beginning to level off in regards to staffing. In this current budget, based on enrollment last year, we cut five positions or did not replace five positions at Exeter High School and two positions at the middle school. In this proposed budget, we've reduced two more at the quadrant of middle school positions and one more at Exeter High School, as well as one more that serves both schools. So over the past two budget cycles, this current one and the proposed, we've reduced by 11 positions.
And...
Okay. I think that's pretty much it.
Well...
So I don't, we don't do a lot of follow-up back and forth. So, thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Helen Joyce from Exeter. I have my card here.
Thank you.
We seem to go through this every year at the deliberative session, where a motion is made on the budget to reduce the budget by multiple millions of dollars based upon unexpended funds that had been returned to the voters the previous year, hence the assumption that there's no need for the budget to be that high. In early January, I contacted Molly O'Keefe, and I had a question with regard to this year's budget, because there was a proposal made last year. I'm not sure if it was $1 or $2 million to cut the budget. And I asked her what the situation was for our budget, for this year's budget, as of January 9th. The budget was, unfortunately, $677,000 over budget for special education because of unanticipated students moving into the district. Another $215,000 for transportation for those students. So without, halfway through the year, the year hadn't even been halfway through, the budget was in jeopardy with $892,000 in arrears based upon those issues. My fear is that if this amendment were to pass, you would be dealing with the same situation next year. New Hampshire has the lowest amount of state funding per student in the country. The average per pupil expenditure for most states, national average, I should say, is roughly $10,200. New Hampshire projects to be giving $3,700 per student. And I anticipate, based on what's going on in Concord, that that number may go down for next year. In addition, any cuts that may be made at the federal level, and we all know that's going on right now, we could be dealing with a crisis situation if we do not get those funds for the coming school year. I would urge everyone to please vote this down. This could be seriously detrimental to all this.
Jim Berlow, Brentwood. The amendment was for $69 million. According to what I've seen so far from SAU-16's website, student population snapshot October a year and a half ago was 2298. This past October, it was 2294. Now, if you take the $69 million and you divide it into, say, and even number 2,300 kids, it comes out to $30,000 per student. We are being overtaxed at the local level. Our local school's out of control, our local... Our local school's out of control, our local town's out of control, and the SAU 16 has averaged over a 3.5% increase every year for the past 20 years. Every 20 years, your budget doubles, and at some point, the taxpayers will not be able to afford this. We're asking for a reasonable increase over last year, amounting to $30,000 per student. I urge everyone here to vote for this amendment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Faria from Exeter. As a former member of the Budget Advisory Committee, I have all of the faith in the world that this budget has been well examined and that there has been ample opportunity to ask lots of questions and to really dive deep into this budget. And every year, we end up at the deliberative session, and we have an irresponsible amendment to cut an arbitrary dollar amount from the budget that does not take into account what actually would be cut with that dollar amount. So I urge the voters to vote against this amendment because it's not based in any fact or analysis. It's an arbitrary number that would cut a very, very small portion of, as we saw in the pie chart, there's really not a lot of wiggle room at all. We're talking about less than 5% of even what is there is even able to be fluctuated. As we understand it, student need is changing. We see that that's going to continue to change. In New Hampshire, our responsibility is for funding a very large portion of public education. That is how things are set up here. That is the way things go here. That hasn't changed, and that's not going to change unless the folks in Concord make a change. The folks in this room tonight are not going to change the structure of how public education is funded in the state of New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question walking in on the meeting. I think what I heard is that a number of positions were eliminated in various areas. I don't remember the number, but would you please tell me which positions were eliminated? Were they teachers or administrative staff?
Who would be able to answer that question? Superintendent, thank you.
It was a variety of positions, certified staff and uncertified staff, meaning support staff, et cetera. There were no administrators that were cut in that number.
Were teachers, actual classroom teachers eliminated?
Correct.
Though the population has increased, you're putting more emphasis on administrative salaries than on teaching salaries.
We're adjusting to the needs in the building and working to provide our students with an education and with the support system that is required with a variety of situations that arise for our students, staff, and administrators.
Thank you.
Well, I would have made other choices.
Thank you. Ms. Faria?
Liz Faria, Brentwood. My cut's not arbitrary, although it's not in my purview to tell you where to cut. If it was me, it would be in the administrative line, some of the guidance lines, but that's not, I'm not allowed to recommend those things. So I would have a question for you. I was looking at the transportation, for example, lines. They're on my copy, it's 18, no, it's 19 and 20. And I see that the transportation for regular to from, I guess that's taking you to school and bringing you back, is $844,787.56, and it's exactly the same at the high school and the middle school. $844,787.56, so I don't understand that. There's also transportation, late bus at CMS, shuttle, job site transportation, sped transportation of $648,200, another sped transportation for $1,195,486.50, homeless transportation, one...
So, excuse me, Liz, we're still on your amendment?
Right.
The two, you know, for or against the amendment?
Yeah, so I'm just kind of confused by this massive transportation line, so maybe that could be explained to me, and maybe that's another place to cut, I don't know. I was amazed that both the middle school and the high school...
Is there someone who could respond to the questions about Ms. O'Keefe? Thank you.
So this is an Exeter Region Cooperative budget. It is not necessarily a high school budget versus a middle school budget. And so when we have a cost that affects both schools, we simply split it down the middle for budgetary purposes. And the other lines for transportation, now, you will see things on there, 40 is high school, 20 is middle school. You will see special education transportation, as that is a different type of transportation, as well as homeless transportation.
No, I see that, but why are there, I guess one is the CMS and one is the high school? So we pay a lot more in special ed transportation than we do in regular ed transportation?
Just looking to Renee.
Yes, we do. By the nature that it's designed, specialized transportation is a smaller group of students. Could involve a bus monitor, it could involve out-of-district placement, the bus runs are higher. It's specialized transportation, so it's not, it's a small bus, student-specific.
Okay, and do we, so this year, in this budget that we have a greater need, we must have a lot greater needs for out-of-district, which I thought we were trying to get away from.
We always work our hardest to keep all of our students in our local schools, which means bringing in therapies, specially-designed instruction, everything. However, if an IEP team determined that a student required an out-of-district placement in order to receive a FAP, the team has the authority to make that decision, and the student is placed out of district. It's an IEP team decision.
So I realize that we're required to provide an adequate education, but we're also...
Free and appropriate.
Appropriate.
Free and appropriate.
Okay. But we're also required to provide the same to regular ed students, and it seems like every single budget, almost, the regular ed gets cut and the special ed gets increased. I don't know if we're just not, there's something in the formula that's...
Liz, we really need to stick to your amendment and talk about, is 69 the right number, or is the number that was proposed by the school board the right number? And I'm going to really try to focus people on that one question, because having broader questions about the budget is very legitimate, but it's not about the amendment, so we need to...
Amendment, I do have legitimate things, but it's not in my purview, right? I'm not allowed to say exact things.
So if you have things to talk about after we're finished on the amendment, you can raise other questions.
Okay, 69 million is my amendment, and it's still an increase.
Thank you.
Paul Royal, Three Pumpkin Circle, Exeter. I try to come prepared with some knowledge about the school system and my town and the population and so on and so forth, but I don't come with anything prepared, like an amendment, usually. So my comments are on the fly of what I've seen here tonight so far. So far, the Budget Advisory Committee and the Board has been insulted, having their budget be called absurd. It's also been called out of control. I know a lot of these people. They're not getting rich sitting up there, I'll tell you that. They're working because they care. They care about our kids. They maybe care about the reputation of the schools. I know my kids do. That's how they get into good colleges. I'm a lucky guy, I say that every year. My kids are healthy and smart, and I appreciate that. But what I also appreciate is that not all kids are like my kids. And kids have special needs, and they need to be met, and that is not going to get better in the current climate and changes that are probably coming down the pipe. We always hear about enrollment. Sometimes enrollment is down, sometimes enrollment is up, but mandates change, and we're responsible to give the kids what are mandated. We can't control those outside forces, so there are always increases. We don't know what kind of populations are coming into town. The voucher system, and this is really not up for debate, will probably increase the amount of kids that need special or have special needs within the schools. Private schools aren't taking those kids as first choice, we all know that. And funding will be reduced. You're looking at this budget, of which, I don't know the exact figure, let's say, I don't know, 80, 90%, are basically fixed costs, their buildings and grounds and bond issues and negotiated teacher salaries and legal commitments that we have made. So when you cut the budget, again, and we did this last year, but it's not, and last year, I said, you know, it was about the frosting, the music, the sports, the stuff like that. The important stuff that keeps kids also happy and wanting to go to school, those needs need to be met. This kind of budget cut will take away from that directly, and it's going to get worse. Enrollment has, again, has very little to do with the budget, the kind of enrollment we're seeing. As far as the cushion, and I'm going to try to wrap this up, Madam Moderator. We're talking about educating a family of kids, whether you have them or not, the kids are your family. If you have any kids in your family, grandkids, whatever, we're educating those people's peers. It's all important, they are all our kids. It's, the cushion is about 33 bucks per person. That's cutting it pretty close. And I got to tell you, a lot of what happens here in this room has to revolve around trust. I trust that the Budget Committee and the School Board has done their level best over every single item on this budget. There are probably a couple of mistakes in there, but they got to be small after all this work. So to come here tonight and call this budget absurd, I'll let you pick the descriptive adjective. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Whistler, Exeter. I'd like to call the question to vote on the amendment.
So we've got some people who seem to be in line to speak, so I want to make sure that those folks have an opportunity to speak to the amendment first.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Cameron Orr from Stratum. So I was hoping that somebody from the Budget Committee could speak to the public comments that you got on this, because I think it's important for everybody to understand, like, this is like one of the last steps of the process. I'm not familiar, I haven't been on that, but I sat on the Stratum Financial Board, and my concern is, in that board, there was a last-minute budget cut by, you know, folks that hadn't been involved with the weekly meetings. So I'm just wondering if somebody from the Budget Committee could speak to, like, how many public comments you got during the many sessions. I saw the schedule you had, it looks like there's seven or eight sessions. So if somebody could speak to that, and, you know, what kind of feedback folks provided prior to this meeting? I appreciate it.
Is there someone who would be able to address that?
Do I stay or leave?
I don't know if we have anyone from the Budget Committee. Do I see a volunteer? Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, I lost my voice. I can address that question. The answer is...
And your name, sorry?
I'm sorry, Heidi Hansen from the Budget Advisory Committee. I was the chair this year.
Thank you.
And I can report that we had no one attend any of our meetings. No members of the public attended the meetings that we held that were posted during the fall when we discussed with each of the department heads their portion of the budget.
Okay, thank you. I think I see another, is there someone else? Just holding up the wall back there. Okay, that's good. All right, so we have a motion to call the question, which would be cutting off debate on this. Is there a second?
Second.
And your name, please?
Nico.
Wow, did you get that, clerk? Nico and surname?
Papa Costantis.
Oh, there we go, Mr. Chair of the Select Board, thank you. Papa Costantis. Excellent, okay. So we need a 2/3 majority to cut off debate at this time. All in favor of calling the question and cutting off debate, raise your cards high.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay.
One more.
I'm sorry?
Point two, ballot vote.
So that requires in writing 10 people, and it has to be before we vote, and we've just voted. So I need to get a request in writing, signed by 10 people who are present, if there is a request for a paper ballot vote, 10 voters.
Is it ten or five?
Excuse me?
Is it ten or ten or five?
I'll have to defer to my legal counsel.
You're going to make me look it up.
I'll make you look it up. All right, so, but in any case, we had already voted on that, calling the question had already occurred. So it has to, the request for a paper ballot has to come before we vote. All right, so with that warning, we'll figure out the exact number. Yes, sir, would you like to?
That's it.
That was it? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this first article? Seeing none, the article will appear...
Can I make a motion?
Oh, we have to do a motion, we have to vote on the amendment. Pardon me, I'm jumping ahead.
You have to vote on the article.
Yes, we have to vote on the amendment. Okay, so all in favor of the amendment to change the budget number to 69 million, please raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, raise your cards and say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Looks like the nays have it. Is there anything further on this Article 1? I see someone approaching the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Julie Gilman, Exeter. I would like to close reconsideration of this article.
So there's a motion to restrict reconsideration of the article. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hall?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay. The ayes have it. This article will not be further reconsidered. Thank you. So the magic number is five, for anyone who wonders. Thank you.
We have a question.
I'm sorry, I don't usually take questions from the floor. What do we got?
The vote can be counted only on amendments.
That's correct. So we don't vote on the article itself. If there are no more comments and amendments, it appears on the warrant without any changes. We don't have to vote to make that happen. So, we are done with Article 1. The next article is Number 2, collective bargaining agreement, teacher. Shall the school district vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Exeter Region Cooperative School Board and the Exeter Educators Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Fiscal year estimated increase for 2026, $923,316. For 2027, $1,186,152. For 2028, $1,095,501. And further, to raise and appropriate, $923,316 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The School Board and Budget Advisory Committee recommend $923,316. Majority vote is required. Is there someone on the stage who would like to introduce this article?
All right, I'll start with the introduction. So myself and Don Bullins were the representatives from the Co-op Board that negotiated this contract with the teachers. This process started in August. We met with the teachers a total of six different times in the evening until we came to a conclusion. We had a lot of input from teachers, administration, building principals. There is not much that changed within this teacher contract from prior years, with the exception of the percentage increases. Happy to speak to any questions that anyone has about the contract. Happy to speak to any questions that anyone has about the contract.
Liz Faria-Brentwood, that's exactly what I was going to ask. What are the percentage increases?
So the percentage increases for fiscal year 2026 is 3.5 percent, and the percent increase for 2027 is 3.25, and the increase for 2028 is also 3.25.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on Article II? Seeing none, that will appear on the ballot without changes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article II.
Okay, that's Amy Ransom. Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
Erin?
I'm sorry?
So this is to restrict reconsideration of the article, so it can't be brought up again later in the evening. Correct? Yes. Okay. All in favor of restricting reconsideration of this article, raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. This article will not be reconsidered this evening. Okay. The next article is Article III, Capital Reserve Fund. Shall the Exeter Region Cooperative School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to be placed in the Capital Reserve Fund previously established in 1998 for the purpose of construction, reconstruction, or acquisition of school buildings and/or school ground site improvements, including associated engineering and architectural fees, and further to name the School Board as agents to expend the fund. This sum to come from June 30, fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. The Exeter Region Cooperative School Board recommends this appropriation. Majority vote required. Is there someone who would like to present this?
Yes, I would like to.
Thank you.
So the Capital Reserve Fund is a fund that we recommend continuing to put money toward, and the purpose of this is to ensure that if something comes up, you know, if we own homes, we own, if there's something that just happens, that we have money to appropriate toward that. So the example that we look to is the actual roof of this building that we're sitting in right now is five acres. That's how large it is. So if something comes up at the roof, it is extremely a large amount of money. So if something happens, let's say in November, and we're, and then we find out what's happening, then we find out a cost, and we're looking for another year and a half till we can raise the money and put it in the budget to do something about that. So this Capital Reserve gives us the right to actually make the choice and keep the buildings in tip-top shape, rather than trying to continue to put it into a budget. It makes sense, we've been doing it for a while, and what we, this makes Exeter strong when we have a Capital Reserve, because when something comes up, we can, as a community, fix it on the spot and move on. Think about the boilers, the roof, any of those large expenditures that could come up. So...
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments or amendments on Article III? I'm sorry, I...
How much money is in there?
So we, I can't, if you wish to make a comment or question, I need you to come to the microphone. Thank you.
My question is, you're asking to put two hundred thousand dollars into a fund. What I would like to know is how much money is currently in the fund?
Is there someone who has that information? Yes, Ms. O'Keefe?
So the Capital Reserve Fund has six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eighty dollars. And I'll answer the turf fund, since that's coming up next, one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments, changes, amendments? Okay, seeing none, this article will appear on the ballot without change. Which brings us to Article IV, the Capital Reserve Fund for Synthetic Turf Replacement.
Kate.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. Erin, and seconded by Don. Thank you. All in favor of restricting reconsideration? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, this will not be reconsidered. Okay, we're on to Article IV. Shall the Co-op Region, excuse me, the Exeter Region Cooperative School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the Synthetic Turf Replacement Capital Reserve Fund previously established under the provisions of RSA 35:1 for replacement of the synthetic turf field located at Exeter High School? This sum to come from June 30, fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No amount to be raised from taxation. The Exeter Region Cooperative School Board recommends this appropriation. Majority vote required. Is there a board member who can address this? Mr. Hall?
Yes, good evening. I think we can all agree that Exeter High School in SAE 16 probably has the best sports facilities in the state of New Hampshire. And with that comes the cost of those fields. But tonight, we're focusing on the turf. The turf field we replaced three years ago, the cost for that was just under five hundred thousand dollars. The life expectancy, if it's a great run, somewhere between fifteen and twenty years. So planning ahead, every year, we set aside fifty thousand dollars. So there's a sticker shock, when you get to that year, we have to do it. So right now, we have over the, I think Molly just said, over a hundred thousand dollars in the account, and we're asking to put another fifty thousand dollars, planning for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or amendments? Yes.
I am not going to vote against this, I voted for it last year. I just would like a reminder, the roof wears out, just about everything wears out. Aside from the fact that you don't want people to say no at the last minute, what's the rationale for this one wear item being carved out every year?
Okay, so why is it a special fund? Okay, Superintendent? Thank you.
Sure. The rationale actually for both of those, the Capital Reserve and for the athletic turf, is to avoid a large increase in one year on the taxpayer. So in other words, we're trying to do that rainy day fund, if you will, for the roof. We know that that roof is only going to last so long, and we don't want that cost to come as, have to be bonded, et cetera, et cetera. So trying to save it at a pace that will keep things up to shape when they need to be replaced. So that's really the purpose of it, is to try and keep that tax rate as stable as possible.
I think the question is, why do we have a special one for the turf and not fold it into...
Yeah, I understand that concept. I know we're going to spend the money, and I like evening it out. I just don't, I just never understood why this one light item isn't in that same area. Is it not allowed to be for some reason?
Nope. Molly?
It could be in there, however, this was before I was employed in SAE 16, it was created. But when you create a trust fund, it has to be used for that purpose. So by having this separate trust fund here, the Board or whoever is the agent to expend cannot expend it except for that purpose. So it protects unappropriate spending.
Okay, I guess, is that okay? All right, good, thank you. Yes.
Eileen Flocard, Exeter. My question about this sort of turf is, when it's replaced, and I think we're all kind of much more attuned to where does this stuff go and how does it get recycled? And what is our responsibility as human beings when we talk about this is the best field we ever saw in our lives? Unfortunately, the replaced field gets hauled off in a truck. Where does it go? What happens to it? And what are we doing responsibly for those plastic particles?
I don't know if there's anyone on the stage who has that information, but, oh, are we pointing up into the rafters?
Yes.
Expecting some help from a celestial assistant over there? I don't know if Mr. Lister has any information on this. Thank you. Do you mind coming down? That's what happens when you sit in the back of the class. Every now and then, you get called on.
Good evening. When we replaced it three years ago, they did, the company we used was FieldTurf, and they took the existing material away. I can't say for sure exactly where it went, I can find that out for you, but we certainly believed it was disposed of and handled properly, just like we do with other hazardous materials. It wasn't like we took it to the Exeter landfill or anything, they hauled it away, if that helps.
Thank you.
Just another comment, is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
If we're looking at something that may not need to be replaced for ten or fifteen years, I think it behooves us to get some more information about, just similar to the Styrofoam issue that, you know, sounds like a great idea. Maybe we could be proactive, and if it turns out that that money is accumulating and we decide that that's not the way we want to go, I'd leave it to people who are more clever with budgets than I do to figure out how to do that. But the importance of a safe field, as well as a good field, is something we'd like to continue, so...
And one of the things that I notice is that it's a synthetic turf replacement fund, so it doesn't particularly dictate a particular material that has to be used. And I think that's a great idea to figure out a way to have something that's maybe a little more sustainable. We're going to need a really big recycling bin when the time comes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? I see someone approaching the mic.
It's not for this one.
Okay. This is the last one, we're not going to have time for anything else once we're done.
It's just who came.
Pardon me?
This is just the count of who came from the towns.
Oh, okay. So if you wish to make that comment now, go right ahead.
Okay, so I would like to thank...
She's been taking attendance.
Every year for many, many years. So out of the two hundred and one people who came tonight, I would like to thank you. There are only about twenty-eight thousand that could have been here. Even though I disagree with a lot of you, I'm glad that there were ninety-four from Exeter, twenty-four from, I don't know where I put my, twenty-four from Stratum, thirteen from Newfields, seventeen from Kensington, six from East Kingston, and forty-seven for Brentwood. So thank you for coming.
Yes, I second that. Anything further on Article IV? Seeing nothing, this article will appear on the ballot without any changes. And hello, Ms. Bullens?
Make a motion to restrict reconsideration.
That's restrict reconsideration, seconded by Ms. Lyons. Thank you. All in favor, raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your cards and say nay. The ayes have it. I am grateful for everyone who showed up. Liz has already thanked you so much. Thank you to Mr. Lister for keeping the building so beautiful. Thank you to Mr. Monahan for letting us use it. Is there a motion to dissolve the meeting?
Motion to dissolve.
A motion to adjourn the meeting?
To dissolve it, we'll be done. Mr. Goethe, yes, seconded by Ms. Ransom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please return your cards to those nice supervisors. Thank you, everybody.